So I will now read the official announcement pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, chapter 330A, section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020 order imposing strict limitation on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the board of select, Topsfield Board of Select will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation for members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the Topsfield website at dub 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 Topsfield dot dub, sorry, dub 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 dot Topsfield hyphen MA dot gov. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to watch or listen to the meeting may do so in the following manner: video conference, see login information below. No person, no in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately assess, access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event that we are unable to do so, despite best efforts, we will post on Topsfield website an audio or video recording, transcript, or other comprehensive record of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting. That said, I would like to call the meeting to order. The only announcement which we've sort of taken care of is Debbie, I presume that you are recording this for your purposes in notes?
I am.
And Dick is recording as well. So other than that, there are no other announcements at this time. And so what I would like to do is for item three, turn leadership of the conversation over to Kevin, who's been working hard on this, and Kevin, allow you to leave it from here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you Commissioners and other Board of Selectmen for joining us to the, for the call today. We, as we all remember, we had a conversation a number of months ago discussing this as a group, as a team. One of the action items coming out of that was to kind of give a little bit more direction around how we would make a transition from the current setup to a transition where the department heads, the superintendents for the parks and cemetery, the highway, and whatever would report to the town administrator going forward, and the Commissioners reorganized in advisory capacity. Since that last meeting, I've had the pleasure to work closely with Greg, Arie, and Steve, the three department heads, for the three I mentioned earlier, and really have dug very deeply into how each of the different departments are operating, looking at what their roles are, looking at what the Commissioners' roles are, and looking at what a future organization might look like operationally for, for, for the town in reference to the three departments. So I just want to acknowledge them and just right off the top, I know they're on the call today, just say thank you for the hard work by the three of them. The information we'll share today and the, any successes that we, or the successes we will have are absolutely results of, of the collaboration and support that they've shown around making this, this transition just that successful. So, so what I was thinking I would do is I sent out a slideshow, or Debbie sent out a slideshow, slideshow on my behalf earlier today. I hope everybody was able to receive that copy. If you haven't, it's, it should be in your inbox. I'm going to walk through the slide deck that I put together just to kind of give overarching what we've been doing, what we know, what it might look like. And then from there, my hope is just have an open conversation with everybody here on the call, answer any and all questions, and, and, and listen too to, you know, what, what types of thoughts you might have, if there's something, you know, we might want to consider taking deeper on to in a certain area or what have you. So does anyone have any questions at this point? Okay, that's, that's good. All right. So what do we know? So I took, just the current conditions, as we all know, we have the individually elected Commissioners that represent the three different boards, or the three different departments, water, parks and cemetery, and the highway. When I first came in, it was, it was a conversation I had with a few people about, you know, taking a hard look at this type of transition taking place. And, you know, I, we, we wouldn't be where we are today without the, you know, the work that everyone else has been doing. I talked about Gary, Greg, and Steve, but with all the Commissioners as well, I appreciate that. So what we've, what we talked about was a ton of initiatives over those responsibilities, like I said earlier, and continuing to have the Commissioners as an advisory group capacity. I want to be clear too, there's a couple of questions that people asked, which, you know, what does that advisory group look like? The way I see it is it would be advisory groups for the individual departments still. And it would be sort of, I see such value in the institutional knowledge that you folks have, and I want to take advantage and leverage that as we, you know, make these transitions, this transition successfully. I don't think it'd happen without that. So my hope would be is, you know, as much as the board, the Commissioners are willing, and as much as the need is there, is to try to, you know, call meetings with you folks to discuss different types of items that are coming up. And so I, I see there being huge collaboration that continues after the transition. And I'll mention that in the home rule petition, that if you hadn't seen previously, that hit your doorsteps yesterday, hopefully, that the language in the article, I think it's article 23 or 21, that is the language that's spelled out that will allow for this transition. That language was drafted by KP Law as it's a home rule petition, wanted to make sure that it was done right, done, you know, and they, the language in there contemplates the things that we had been talking about to date. And so with a successful vote at town meeting on the 20th, we'll then have a commencement date of January 1st of next year, 2021, for the, for all this to become a fit. And so it'll give us a little bit of time over the next few months to sort of fine tune the plan I'm going to walk everyone through. But what we did land on as we, as Gary, Greg, and Steve and I talked, was we're looking at really a three-phase approach, which I'll get into more details in a minute. And then I wanted to, at the request of everybody, and something I obviously wanted to understand better too, is what is the benefits of the reorganization, looking at costs, operational efficiencies? And then, you know, we, part of this incorporates more of a, or involves a carving out or creation a little bit more of a recreation department. And so we'll talk about that as well. So the phased approach, first phase, so first phase is underway, it's pre-implementation, it's obtaining support from the team and the town approve, and also the town's approval, obviously. And it's, it's, it's education for itself, and then planning on how we can do this successfully. Second phase is, is the implementation of it. So on January 1, the departments will officially be reporting to the town administrator, Commissioners' responsibility will be granted, will be granted to the town administrator and the Board of Selectmen.
Kevin, are you going to bring this up on the screen?
So I actually, I'm, I'm on the iPad here, I'm on, working off of my desktop, so I'm not on the same computer with what I, what I'm on here. Let me see if I could.
Share your screen.
It's not on this.
Dick, Dick, can I, Dick, can I suggest that you open up PowerPoint and put it there, and then you could just toggle between the screen and the PowerPoint? And if you wish, you can set up your, your Zoom screen so it's off to one side, and you can look at both. That's what I'm doing. Kevin, I want to compliment you on the spring green colors of this change, we're growing something new.
Thank you.
Dick, have you got both up?
No, go ahead, Kevin.
Do you want me to continue? Okay. So then the Commissioners, like we talked about earlier, would become in advisory capacity. There would be no real organizational structure, structural changes, so the highway would still operate as the highway operates today, the parks and cemetery would continue to operate in the same capacity, and the water would continue to operate in the same capacity. Some efficiencies could be realized though immediately, in that there could be some levels of additional collaboration that could take place, possibly sharing resources and things of that nature. Phase three is the structural changes. So what, this is what Gary, Greg, and Steve and I have been working on for the last couple of months, is what that will look like. And that's where, at some point, I'll talk about just in the next slide in more detail, but at some point, we want to take a hard look, where we haven't taken a hard look, but we'd like to, depending on the circumstances and the timing, transition how the organizations are structured right now differently to allow for some cost savings and efficiencies as well. So let me just get to the next slide. So when Steve retires, the, the, the plan would be not to replace that superintendent position as it is today. We look to reorganize the parks and cemetery team and look at them to report to the highway department. The highway, water, parks and cemetery, we look to, we currently have 40 hours of administrative support, we would look for that position at 35. And let me just preface this by saying, this is sort of a, some of these are sort of variable, it's, it's, this is sort of like, if we were starting fresh today, this is sort of the plan we would have. For instance, we have Anne Marie who's doing 40 hours, we wouldn't necessarily reduce her down to 35, just to reduce her down to 35. But this is sort of, at the long term, would be two 35-hour positions in the highway, water, and parks and cemetery departments. One of the admin would be dedicated to recreational administration, administration for 10 hours, so report outside of, of Greg and Gary. And then the other administrative support would be, have a specialty, as you maybe call it that way, of a cemetery administration coordinator, another 10 hours dedicated to that. So you have.
Can I? Kevin?
Yes.
All right. So are we saying you have two administrators, administrative assistants?
Be two administrative assistants, 50 hours for the water, highway, and parks and cemetery, and 10 hours for recreational, and 10 hours for cemetery administration.
So that, but it's two people?
Two people, correct. And there'd be, we talked a lot about cross-training, making sure there's opportunities.
Where will it be, where will it be located?
They'd be located in, one of them will be located for their full hours at the highway, the DPW garage likely, and the other person would be 25 hours up there, and then 10 hours at recreational administrative space. So if we, if we locate that in an office at town hall, a person might come down and maybe work down in the bullpen area in the garden suite level, or they might be able to work up at the, up there, up at the highway, Department of Public Works building. That's fluid, that's.
Let me ask you a question, Gary. Gary?
Yes, I am.
Where would you put this second person?
Out in our front office, as in talking with Greg in regards to this, years ago, there was a two workstation office out there. That can be very easily reconfigured to do that again, and we would just move some of our filing and/or printers and such into our conference room possibly as the new area for those things, since it will no longer be a, a board, so to speak. If we did need a conference area, we could always utilize the town hall for something like that.
All right. So now we have the, this person is dedicated for the park and cemetery, which would mean, I'm Mrs. Jones, and I'm coming, and I want to find my mother's grave. Where am I going to go to get that information?
Do you want that, Kevin, or do you want me to answer that?
We could tag team it. All right. So basically, the cemetery administrative coordinator, whether they're located where Connie's located right now at town hall, or they're located up at the garage, it'd be a clear way for someone to contact that person, and that, that person coordinate those, those efforts. So, you know, I couldn't sit here today and say definitively, absolutely concrete, that person's going to be sitting at this location or that location, but wherever they're located will be accessible by the public for those exact reasons. I think when you talk about.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just thinking that as we put this together, you've got to think about these things, because, you know, all of a sudden, you get it together, and then we'd say, whoa, what are we going to do with this? What are we going to do with that? Steve, you have a better idea. I mean, I assume that person is, is, is very busy, or is busy, because that person here would be handling grave sales, setting up grave openings, and also giving people directions as to where graves are located. Am I correct?
Well, first of all, you've got to know that all of our stuff that we do here in the cemetery, everything's in the computer now. All of our lots are in the computer, and they're cross-referenced to the roads. So it's real simple to look up the last name of somebody, pick it up, and coordinate with the road. We have little miniature maps that we put an X on for the people, and hand it to the people, they can go out and find their grave. Lot sales are done on a succession basis, it's the next one or two, or whatever the family would like to buy in a row, and what we do is we put a cone up, and in that section for that row, and the next two are represented by that cone, and the paperwork is facilitated right in the office. So we have simplified our entire procedures here the way we do business and streamlined everything. So everything's computerized, it could be done from the town hall, it could be done from the highway garage, or it could be done from the park cemetery.
So if I was coming to buy a lot, in other words, I would go to the, this administrative person, let's assume she's at town hall, he's here, he's at town hall, and they would tell me, and then you could give them directions down to the cemetery, and they can go down and look at the lot, and then if they want.
You got it, 100%, correct.
So, yeah, all right. Now, if you have that person located at the highway facility, I would think that would be a little bit more cumbersome. Am I correct or incorrect?
No, it wouldn't, I don't think it'd be any difference from the town hall. Like I said, everything's in the computer, and everything's accessible by map and coordinated through maps, and it's the same procedure, whether it be here, at the cemetery, at the town hall, or the highway. So.
Okay. Fine, sounds like, sounds like you guys have discussed it, that's good.
Kevin, a quick question. Right. Do we have, looking at the numbers, it looks like we have 50 hours of admin help right now, and we're moving to 70 hours. Is that correct? Because it says one admin goes reduce from 40 to 35, and then the second one says increase from 10 hours to 35. So do we have two people currently doing 50 hours, or one person?
We have, it's a mix. So we have Connie, who is in the cemetery department, who is 10 hours a week, and that represents the admin too.
Okay.
Anne Marie, who's 40 hours right now. So it's 50 hours between the cemetery and the water and highway currently. What we would look at is water, highway, and cemetery to be at 50, 60 hours, so we're adding about 10 hours of, of, of time there. But that's a little bit of flex, because the cemetery administrative coordinator, you know, if they have a week where they have to work eight hours on cemetery instead of 10, they have other responsibilities with the water highway, where that person can pick up some of the other things that are going on up in that space too. So there's some sharing of resources, I guess you could say, in, in the administrative side of it. And I mentioned earlier, the cross-training is really important too, to have two people who can do payroll. So if somebody goes away on vacation, or somebody goes, you know, medical leave, the other person can pick up some of the items that, that need to be picked up at that point.
So just, why is it going up 20 hours? Why is the need for admin help going up 20 hours by combining?
So right now, Anne Marie is at 40 hours, and Greg, I can let you speak to how much time she spends, she spends on the water side, and, and Gary, how much time on the highway side. But there's, she's, she's working, those hours are worked, and they're, part of this, we're taking on additional responsibilities for the highway side of it, is to make sure that the, the parks component of it's picked up as well. So those hours are, if you, if you do, really, it's 10 hours on the rec administration, that's add-on. Well, I shouldn't say that, because the cemetery's additional time, but.
I'm just looking at the numbers, it says reduce from 40 to 35, and increase from 10 to 35. So if we're making the case that this is for efficiencies, it begs the question, why are we going up 20 hours in the admin? It could be that there are a number of things that just aren't getting addressed, or they're going into overtime, and this is addressing an existing need, or it could be that there are additional activities that we could never get to, that now we're going to get to, or move to some technology that's a transition. So there may be other reasons for it, but I think the question would come up, if we're doing this for efficiencies, why are we increasing hours? So just to have an answer.
Yeah, we looked at this one, we looked at this one pretty hard.
Lynn?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it's the shadow. I think you will find right now that there's a good many hours that would be covered by this admin in the new situation, that are presently being completed by Steve.
Okay.
You know, dealing with the graves, dealing with some of the park stuff, and you're not going to have a, you're not going to have a, you're going to have working people to work in the park and cemetery, but the kind of things that Steve does as a superintendent, there's a certain amount of hours that are involved in that, and with no superintendent, you're losing those hours there. So you've got to put them someplace, because the work needs to be done. You've got to tell Mrs. Jones where the grave is, that type of thing.
Sure. And actually, that makes sense, because you're doing it at a lower cost, by shifting them.
Steve is doing it now. The thing I want to ask Gary and Greg for just a minute, and it probably shows that I don't read the, the payroll when I sign it, I thought Anne Marie's hours were 37.
Terry, the landfill regulation possibly as well, and rec currently, under the highway, was kind of that thought with losing that part of Steve's ability, is would I be able to keep up with all that when I was already running one department, and then gaining these under as well?
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, both of the hours, yeah. Gary or Greg, I mean, isn't Anne Marie's hours only 37?
No, she's, she's 40 hours a week. She spends, the split is 26 hours water, 14 hours highway. And as part of this process, I went through and looked at all the cash sheet data for the past few years, and the split is actually closer to 30, 32 hours a week water than the balanced highway. So.
Yeah, David used to complain to us a lot about that.
Yeah, it's, yeah, he, he was right. So part of this is to adjust for that mismatch that's, you know, correct for, and it's been in place for, you know, probably 20 years now, but to make an adjustment to, to match what's actually happening. And much like Steve, there's things that I do that, you know, all the major water billings, generating all the late notices, things like that, that's something an admin person can do.
Could I just make, Lynn, just to comment from park and cemetery standpoint as well, and, and I think you raised a great question, Lynn. The 10 hours that Connie currently does is really woefully inadequate, and I think Philly, you were absolutely correct, that Steve fulfills a lot of that, because there's a lot that goes behind working with a grieving family. So that position, 10 hours, has never been enough. And then the second piece is that we're adding, what we're excited about is some really interesting possibility for recreation, and we have not really had that ability to do that. So if you're looking at increasing the hours, managing all courts, fields, et cetera, I, I think you, you'll find that that's, would be a very justified position. So, but you raised a good point, Lynn, about, are you increasing, because you're sort of shifting responsibilities.
Right, okay, thanks, Gretchen.
So those are the two administrative positions, and then the, you know, obviously with some additional responsibilities on the highway side, some more additional oversight necessary, some compensation for, for both the highway foreman and the superintendent would be necessary. And then this one's a little bit flexible, I have two options in there, and I put the second option in, in this most recent version of the slide deck. I've been working off the draft slide deck for the last few months with, with the guys, and cleaned it up for the purposes of this meeting. But what the plan is, is when Steve retires, it's, if it's January 1, or if it's, you know, March, or it's, whatever, whenever that date happens, the option there, we would, we would be able to move the grounds team, the park and cemetery guys, into the model we talked about under the highway. And then that leaves, we've now removed the recreation portion of it. So one of the things we could do based on how the economy's going, is either go in all in with a, and I'm estimating we need probably a three-quarters position at least to start, to do it right, and to build up those programs that Gretchen just talked about, and do it successfully. If the economy is the way I think it's trending towards, towards the end of this year, the other option we, we've talked about is bringing in a part-time, either stipend position or an hourly position, that can help manage the way Steve's managed the rec department to date. So we don't lose that component of it, because we'll still need to do that. And I can't just say, Gary, you got to take on the management of that as well, because that's a, that's a whole nother, as talking through this with the guys, it's a whole nother item that has a lot of impact to people in the community. So the option might be is to take some, bring somebody on, or possibly bring somebody back for a period of time. Again, if the, if we're not ready to go for that full rec director, if somebody can keep us moving and keep the operations going, and we'll be able to save some money, as I'll show you in two slides from now, we did in that option. So it gives us some flexibility, based on what our needs are and where the economy is. And then the other thing too, is if we do move into the rec director position, over time, with developing a successful rec department, you, you will have an enterprise fund, we can develop, we can see some funding going in there. And some of those funds that come in could offset some of our, some of our costs, and we could look to put in an additional grounds crew person, which was a recommendation. We're looking at seasonal help versus one full-time employee, there's a lot more benefits of one full-time employee than the seasonal help, as it's been explained to me, and as I've seen in my experiences as well. So that's a future option down the road, once everything starts to solidify, and we've got the systems up and running, but something I think we would want to at least keep on as part of the conversation. The next slide just shows the org chart of basically what I just explained to everybody. So you can see town administrator, the three department heads, below the department heads are the administrative support, the shared administrative support. And one of those administrative support reports to the highway super and the rec director for part of those hours, like we talked about. And then the other one will do report to the, and I always say highway, it's highway suit, and highway and the water, because it's a shared resource. And the same thing for the other administrative person, only they'll have a certain portion of their time dedicated towards cemetery support. And then from there, really, the operations, other than the grounds crew folks, maintains the same. Two operators, primary in the water department, you have your three equipment laborers, mechanic, and then you have the three grounds crew, and then beneath them, just for, as a placeholder, is the seasonal crew that we typically, as I understand it, we've seen three people coming on recently. But we've had years where we brought on much, many more people as well. I don't think, especially in these circumstances, we, we have not hired the seasonal crew this year with the hiring freeze, and obviously has a major impact to Steve's team, but I do want to acknowledge, he's managing that incredibly well, and the guys are doing the same as well, because we know they're short-staffed, and they're trying to keep up with everything, and it's a lot, but it's also very much appreciated under the circumstances.
I could, yep, excuse me, I could envision a lot of questions, possibly a town meeting about field maintenance and so forth from TAA members, so you might be prepared for that. I have two questions. Steve, do you know when you're going to retire?
I do.
You prefer not to tell the rest of us? I've heard about four different dates.
That's, that's what happens in Topsfield. I am looking at two different dates. One, one would be early fall, and the other would be late December.
Yeah, okay.
So that's what I'm, I'm just working out my financial picture at the moment.
I understand. I understand. The other thing, I just, I want to affirm particularly with the board of selectmen. That the water department will continue and stay as an enterprise system with a separate budget and so forth. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Are the selectmen supportive of that?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm not sure I follow what you're saying. What would be the difference or the same?
Well, in other words, we're not going to put the water department funding into the general fund. It would be a separate.
It's still an enterprise. In other words, you're saying is it going to be an enterprise fund? It would stay as an enterprise fund?
Yeah. Yeah. That's what I'm asking.
That's not a question. I mean, there's no suggestion of changing that, right?
No.
No, we agree with you, Phil, to leave it as is.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I have to select them.
Not part of this plan at this time.
Yeah.
All the existing funds, enterprise funds, perpetual care, recreation, those will be maintained in the transition as they are.
Okay.
So one of the things that's really important with this is, well, does it make financial sense to make a transition like this? And so I did, as best I can, I guess, an analysis of what the financials will look like. We'll start with the savings, actually. I know it's on the right side, not the left. You go left, the right, but we'll start with the right. With Steve's salary, when he retires, that's $93,292. That is vacated. And then with the additional hour, five hours of admin support, it's additional cost of seven, or it's a saving, sorry. The reduction of five hours, it's an additional savings of $7,490. So it's just over $100,000 in savings if you look at those two positions and just the positions alone. You look at the cost, looking at us, trying to get a sense for what the right, the right grade stats, looking at the other departments and comparables in other communities of where a rector falls in with other comparable positions like the council and agent director and other things like that. Seemed appropriate for purposes of estimating cost to do a grade seven. And then based on experience, the step one through six felt right. And so if you look at that, the salary for that person, again, 30 hours a week, not 40 because we're doing three fourths of position. We look at it somewhere between, say, $60,000 and $68,000. Split the difference, you're just over $63,000. Now, if you hire the part-time rec director, if you do a part-time rec director, like I mentioned earlier, 10 hours a week, just for the time being. If you annualize that, you're looking at $16,768. So it's a real savings. You're not going to get the bang for your buck though, in the sense of building, being able to build that program, programmatic experience in the enterprise fund and things like that. It's maintaining what we have, which is fine. It works. Steve does a great job with it. And, but there is that difference, that variance in the cost. Again, with an enterprise fund and a rec department, the hope would be, and the intent would be that at some point it's generating enough revenue where that salary for the rec director, it pays for itself, I guess you could say. There's enough money coming back from the programs that are created.
Kevin?
Yes?
A question. If those are one or the other as far as an option, if we decided to go with the 10 hours a week, is that an employee?
That would be a part-time employee.
Because I'm wondering if that's kind of a stopgap measure and you really want to get to the full rec director. Have you now backed yourself into a corner that you have an employee that really you wanted the higher level individual? So now are you going to have to have two individuals?
So when I was, Steve, can I, do you mind if I talk about what we talked about a little bit? So one of the things we talked about was trying to get a real handle on what the rec department and how it works right now. And, you know, talking with Steve, 10 hours felt about right. You know, I've had some preliminary conversations with Steve. There's no commitment by either side at this point, but just preliminary conversations that in the event that going to a full rec director, our first option doesn't make sense. Would it, would there be a possibility for some, for you to come back and help us for a time, a period of time? We have the institutional knowledge and we absolutely have the passion that Steve brings to the job. That could be a huge benefit to us. So that's something we've very, it's out there, it's a conversation. And Steve recognizes too, when we talked about that, if we went in that direction that, you know, when the time is right to go with a full rec director, we would be transitioning out and into that with somebody different. So that's sort of the option. It's a great question, Lynn. I mean, it could just be a temporary, a temporary type position as well. I mean, we'll build it in a way that there's, it's, we have the flexibility to move from the part-time to the full-time when appropriate.
Okay, because we all know it's very hard when someone is hired, you know, to remove that position and bring in another position. And if that individual isn't able to go up to that higher level, you know, it makes it more difficult. So an option like you just mentioned, I think is cleaner.
Yeah, no, absolutely. And I think, you know, as things progress and like what I just mentioned doesn't work out, like one reason or another, and, you know, we don't go in that direction. You know, that might force our hand as a rec director to possibly as well. Because we're still going to have a net savings if we want the rec director added the hours on the admin assistant. We're still, you know, we're at under $100,000 cost before benefits. I recognize that as well. But the same thing goes though, there's benefits on the other side too that go away. So it's, it's, it's kind of comparable. So even if you go with a three quarters rec director and you get everything that comes with that person and all the additional services, you're, we're hopefully still going to save or be at the same cost that it would be from a personnel standpoint. But I'm going to talk about in a minute, some of the other efficiencies created and some of the costs we will save hopefully by making the transition as well.
Kevin, what I like about this is there's a plan in here which is minimal cost. It might be fewer services than we ultimately decide we want. But I like the fact that with the part-time in there, it shows that we don't have to jump in both feet. It may become very clear when the time comes that both feet's the way to go. But I like the fact that there's a model that both reflects the part-time if we are pressed financially. But we also have a view to what might be involved with getting a full-time or three-quarter time rec director. So I like that flexibility. My way of looking at this is that we're not committing to either one of those, but we see either as a possibility.
And I just, I said, when else, with the revenue projections and the direction that things seem to be going, having that flexibility is critical because you can obviously see the net difference right there. If we went with the part-time for a full year, you're almost at $50,000 a saving. So it gives us that sort of, that opportunity.
Kevin, a question for you, kind of a player in devil's advocate. Let's say Steve decides he doesn't want to do that. He wants to go fishing. Would you go out on the street and look for a 10-hour-a-week person? And does that bring into the picture Lynn's concern about, you know, if you find later on, you've got to go to the higher position?
Hey Kevin, I can address some of that. In the past, when we ran the rec programs years ago, when we set that up, we utilized school teachers. They had the knowledge. They had the abilities and they knew all the kids in the communities. And they were all looking, I don't think there was a teacher out there that wasn't looking for at least some hours to offset their, their summers so they could have some financials coming in. We, we had no problem filling slots. The need is there. It's definitely there for non-competitive sports and events. You're going to see things like you need your Christmas walk, you need, you need that taken care of to go forward. That's an extremely popular event. Your summer concert series, anything that you do, instructional programs or anything like that. The need is there and the financials, when that was running and up years ago, when it was actually the program was really delivering. The financial picture is, I don't know if you folks remember, that revolving account had to go back to town meeting to get that level or the selectmen's office. I can't remember which. But that level had to be raised because of the financial that was coming in. So the picture here, this, this can actually work and it can be a self-sufficient program.
Yeah, I think it's great to bring someone in and the need is definitely there, as you said, Steve. It would just be a matter of do you do it on a contracted basis or do you make them an employee? Options a little more complicated and longer lasting, you know, implications from it?
Well, for those of you who weren't here, we started the senior program with one person. So it probably will definitely grow in time as we've seen the senior program grow. But it's definitely something that town needs, the amount of recreation that happens. I'm going to throw something out on the table and maybe I shouldn't, but I'll throw it out there anyway. And Dick, you may be able to address it more because I think you've had more to do with it. If we go to the recreation person, are we going to finally get our arms around Hoods Pond?
What are you trying to eat your arms around?
We insure it. We have no control over its funds. We have no control over what goes on down there. The town has, it's my understanding, and it could be incorrect, that the employees aren't even quarried, which they should be. So I think the town has some pretty big exposure with that operation.
This is John.
Talking about the details of it, such as quarrying that, as far as I know, they've been quarried, but I think that's a small thing. As far as the organization, it's a nonprofit that the town leases that property to, for the purposes of recreation, well, for the purpose of using of the hood pond. We don't have to do that if we don't want to do that. It was found out to be a good way. We don't have, we have a way of controlling the amount of vandalism that's down there because we have somebody organizing and running it. We have a lot of.
Well, I didn't, I didn't.
Nobody, nobody's trying to run a profit on it. They're just trying to do a good job for the, for the town. Seems like it was running, but I'm not sure what you're after, Phil.
Well, you know, number one, you talk about nonprofit. I was not aware it was a nonprofit or a separate non-profit organization that existed that runs Hoods Pond that we obviously must have some kind of a contract with. And if they're leasing the pond, I assume the town receives money for that lease.
It's a quid pro quo. They, they take care of it. The property, they've taken on a lot of responsibilities. A couple of years ago, somebody took the electrical cable up and they went through and took care of fixing that. They, they take on a lot of financial responsibilities. Yeah. And they've been doing that, right?
As a person who uses Hood Pond and has the kids who use Hood Pond and know a lot of the people who are on the board at Hood Pond, I don't think the town wants, you want to create a much bigger job for yourself than, yeah, take on Hoods Pond. I think the town for what it gives to ensure, which I, I don't know the exact number, but I recall to be a pretty small number. I think a lot of people think it's a town service and like the town for it. So I think you're getting the bang for your buck without actually having to do much work in terms of Hoods Pond.
Yeah, this is John. I was on the board of Hoods Pond when I, one of the first things when I first got to town here. I got off because I was very concerned about the lack of alignment between the town's legal responsibilities, doing things like they were moving sand. They were doing things that meant the town had a hand in what was going on there. And nothing against the board because they were very well-intentioned and so on. But the reality is a careful, thoughtful plan for who has responsibility for what and how we cover our liability. I never saw when I was there. And my concern had been and still is to a certain extent that if something untoward happened, town's going to get slapped with a lawsuit because the not-for-profit has no money. And if we haven't got our ducks in a row in our arrangement with Hoods Pond, which I think is an absolutely fantastic resource for the town. What's going to happen is we're going to potentially run into some issues. And I just worry about what would happen if something really serious came about in our ability to continue that relationship. So frankly, Kevin, I think that's a really important piece of work that needs to be on your plate at some point to figure out what we do with that. Because.
So we have. Oh, sorry.
Yes, everybody is very well-intentioned. I have no complaints about that at all. And I think that from a functional point of view, it's run really well. But my investigation back, and again, it's a long time ago, over 15 years ago, was that there were an awful lot of gaps where who's responsible for what and who'd be liable if this or that happened.
So the town has insurance on with Maya for the, for Hoods Pond. We have coverage from our end. And I believe a year or so ago, they required, the town required that the association obtain insurance as well. So we actually, we insured, we have like, once in a sentence, double insurance. So we have coverage at the pond, but they also have liability insurance, as I understand it as well.
Okay. I think it's another question outside of this. I think the overall question of should we be engaged with Hoods Pond? I think the feeling is it's a positive resource in town. I don't know anybody who says we should get rid of it. I do think that some kind of engagement with the recreation program makes sense. And I will continue to suggest that more coordination in safety and liability planning between and the overall recreational function of the town would be worthwhile in the future, but not part of today's conversation.
Two other things I just throw in, now that we're moving towards the rec director. And if I had my preference, I would say bringing that person on sooner rather than later is better because there are a lot of opportunities for revenue generation, as Steve mentioned, grant opportunities. And it takes some planning to get these up and running. But there's, there would be a person now to try to coordinate activities with Hood Pond and the town. There was nobody there before and so it just all fell to the board. And in talking with Rose Marie Young, it seems like for a couple of years, she's been trying to move on. It's a lot of work and she's finding it hard to find someone who wants to step in. They may like the support. Not that that entire board gets dismantled, but I think that discussion is worthwhile because they're looking for people to help as well, from my understanding.
So I'm going to move to the next slide, which is operational efficiencies. So we obviously just talked financial, there's some real, there's opportunities there. From the efficiencies of operations, I'm going to touch on these real quick on the slide deck. But then I'm going to turn it over to Greg and Gary and Steve that maybe fill in any gaps. So one item is the mechanic. Right now, there could be in the near future, a transition. And if that takes place, the, we're looking at making sure that the position that's filled can allow some flexibility with addressing issues that can be addressed by this person for not just the highway, but for the water, the counseling, aging, parks and cemetery equipment, police and some of the fire vehicles as well. The SUVs, et cetera, not the larger vehicles, the engines and pump trucks need. But there's.
When that position was created several years ago, it was always intended and still is intended to be available for parks and cemetery, police and fire. That wouldn't be a new thing. That's been responsibility. It's just up to those departments to ask, ask for the work. But it's never been done.
Yeah. So understanding as well that any vehicles outside the highway departments were times done on overtime hours. So those additional costs. We try to avoid that if possible. Also save on labor, save on marked up, markups on the parts as well. But yes, to your point, no, there's, I think there's, there's an opportunity there that, that we can see greater benefit from. I guess regardless, but I will let Gary, if you want to, if you have any thoughts on that particular item?
I, I do. I think it can work in our.
I, I do, I, I think it can work in our favor. Um, the position's funded by the town anyways as a town mechanic. Uh, right now and, and currently it's not being utilized as such. It's sold that position being only utilized for highway department vehicles. Everybody else at this time is going to an outside vendor and using their maintenance line items for that. Far too often now you're paying for overpriced labor and or marked up part costs on things that you don't have to pay for. Um, if you get a program in place and an efficient mechanic, you can set up these programs to really, I can't, I can't put a number on it, but certainly set it up as a cost savings to keep that person busy and keep the fleet running within the, within the town itself without having to utilize these vendors at uh, marked up costs.
Gary, is the mechanic, um, does he have downtime now or does he move on to other activities when he's not servicing the equipment?
That, that's a good question, he um, at, at currently, um, there is some downtime now, but that is because we are, my department and thus through Dave and, and, and you people as well, are, we have a late model fleet. We are very well off in that regard. So we don't have a ton of maintenance issues right now, as well as I make sure my guys keep up on our PMs. Um, but some of the other stuff around town, miles, cruisers and such, um, there are higher miles and older equipment and those things need some more work and more attention that can be done. So I guess the point would be that person, where this to go through, um, it would be, would be busy Monday through Friday, seven to three, um, very busy to keep everything going.
But they have to do that today, so that's a positive.
Yeah, yeah, there would be no downtime after that. Um, currently I, I had had mine going out with my road crew because there was some gaps there that we just didn't have the need at the moment. Um, that will change markedly if this goes through.
I wonder if that would allow us, Gary, to extend uh, the timeframe for replacing the police vehicles. We do them now in a, uh, every three year, I'm not sure guys if that's exactly the schedule, but uh, for that reason that it's expensive to have to repair, so we'd rather keep them current. If we had that ability in-house to extend the life of it, um, that, there might be some savings there.
There is a possibility that certainly with that budget of uh, chief hubbies, you know, the normal wear and tear and, and uh, services, brakes, uh, oil changes, things that currently go out. I know a majority of the fleet right now is not under warranty. So uh, uh, the brand new vehicle and I know, my understanding, they are not getting a vehicle next year as, as currently constituted. So certainly those same, and to be quite honest, a lot of that is preventative maintenance. If those vehicles are getting checked on a routine basis, you can head off some of the bigger problems before they happen, if there is a checklist going on, especially certainly with those emergency vehicles. Um, the last thing I'd ever want to see is something like that, a tire rod end or something because that vehicle had a hundred thousand, which several of those do uh, on them and those are emergency vehicles that need to be sound. Um, you can make sure those things aren't going to take place.
Does our mechanic do preventative maintenance or just repairs?
Uh, he does both, where, yes.
Okay, thanks.
There's an issue with that at the moment, but yes, that's what, yes.
Changing oil is a, changing oil is a preventative maintenance.
Yeah, um, I would also say that if there's a good plan and um, uh, Gary, I've got faith that you could help set this up. If you set up things like, for instance, it sounds silly, but just checking belt tensions, um, wear on timing chains, it's amazing what you can do with that. Um, those are things that take ten, fifteen minutes apiece and um, if it just kind of goes and goes and goes, then suddenly you're faced with a sixteen hundred dollar repair. So my guess is, and particularly on trucks and things like that, that don't sort of have the same, you know, kind of go in, go out, quick service and zillions of parts out there and so on. Huge opportunities, um, also with hydraulics and so on. The more that hydraulics can be checked and seals checked and things like that, I don't know if that's within the scope of such a mechanic to do, but.
Absolutely.
There are absolutely hundreds of things that a well motivated mechanic could do that would probably over time save us close to their salary at time going on, so I'm very much in favor of this and appreciate the thinking that's gone into uh, kind of being proactive on it.
I would, I would say that, this, this is Phil, uh, I would say that, that the important thing is that the department heads of fire and police and so forth, we've got to encourage their people or direct their people to take advantage of, of this mechanic. Uh, you also need to be aware, at present, the mechanic's position is rather loose because our mechanic is out. Uh, well, he was out on disability, uh, he's gone back out, he's using vacation time and we're not sure at this point whether or not he's going to stay with us, so we may have to go out and find a new mechanic. But right now, even the highway department, the men themselves are taking care of the equipment. Uh, so we have a, a loose end there that is going to have to, but the, the concept of what you're talking about. But what I'm saying is this stuff was always available, but somebody's got to say to somebody in the police department, take your cruiser up and have it checked. Or to the fire department, hey, we want to send this vehicle up to be checked. But uh, so it's got to come from that side too. I mean, Gary can't go down and say, hey, uh, you got to send a cruiser up or you got to send this fire vehicle up or you got to send this pickup up. The departments have got to.
Phil, this is where an active town administrator can help make sure that people are paying attention to these things that from a central control point of view, we are looking to take advantage of our resources. I agree with you a hundred percent, it's not going to happen automatically, but I think that we have an excellent opportunity to coordinate it and uh, make it part of how we do business internally going forward. Am I right?
If I jump in one second, I think the bottom line would be, we're paying a mechanic as is now for a full-time position. If, for whatever the reason right now, because we have graced, by the grace of God, with a great fleet up here, we don't have enough work within the highway. There are plenty of other vehicles in town that don't need to go to an outside vendor to get worked on that could be fixed by our town mechanic since we're already paying that salary anyway.
Good.
So could you reconcile just for a moment, Gary, the reasoning for the overtime for the police or park and cemetery or whoever? If we have the gaps, it's just a matter of unable to cross-charge?
Uh, I, I think, well, there's, there's two parts, I think, to that question, Greg might help me here. Part of that, I think, was in the past, there, I don't know if, I'm not sure why this is taking place and I know years ago, um, that was the case that the town mechanic worked on everything, then it went away. I don't know the entire backstory behind that and why overtime was being used for departments uh, to have that, I'm not sure if there was something going on, I don't know the honest answer to that part of it. Uh, Greg, do you have anything on that?
Um, it's been going on for, for quite a while, I think in some ways, um, the mechanics that have been here, there's really probably been two prior to the current mechanic that were interested in being a, a town mechanic uh, with greater responsibility and I think, um, there was some reluctance to have them do that, um, because they were they're want more funding or, or something, so there, there was some sort of deal worked out where you can do multiple departments, but the other departments uh, would be done after hours uh, on overtime. And uh, for a while that included um, all of these departments. I think the COA is still in the water, still uh, doing some of this um, on an overtime basis. Um, but I think the parks and cemetery, cemetery, the police and the fire, um, eventually went back to outside uh, vendors for the work.
Well, I, I think, I think the cost on the overtime was getting to a point for me was exceeding what I was being charged by a professional mechanic with all the uh, things that were available to them. And um, and it came with a warranty that it was fixed and um, uh, if, if it broke down again, if we, we utilized the mechanic that was at time and a half, we'd have to pay time and a half again to have the same product fixed again. So there was definitely some issues there um, in the past. But I think, you know, I think Gary uh, uh, is on the right track with this. Um, it, it, you, you pick somebody up eventually who can work on everything, including all of our mowers and all of our weed whips, small engines, so on and so forth, and do all the preventive, like blades, belts, oil, grease, uh, regular routine things, uh, plus preventive things. Um, you know, ground's equipment goes down on a daily basis, whether it's new or used. It's just because of the way it works. And um, I, I think this is an ideal situation, um, send a piece right up there, get it fixed immediately instead of having a phone call, a repair shop and wait for them to pick it up. Um, this is bring it up to the highway, uh, highway garage, have them work out of there and the efficiency and the speed of having that piece of equipment back is, is, is worth the cost savings right there.
That's actually a great segue, Steve, too, because I know one thing we talked about was uh, further sharing of equipment. Um, so, you know, we talked about um, the weed whips and, and, you know, highway being able to take advantage of it, the grounds crew, you know, you know, right now, Stephen, you might be able to speak a little bit better to it than I can, but the, your, your equipment, your fleet of equipment that you have and how you, you know, double, right? Purchase two, so that one, one always breaks, you have that next one ready to go. Um, and if there's, if there's two pieces.
It's, it's, like I said, for grounds equipment, a daily event for mowers to go down, weed whips to go down. And like I said, whether it's new or used, it doesn't make any difference. If you have a machine that's rotating in the dust, dirt like that all day, things are going to happen. Um, and we, we maintain them ourselves the best that we can. Um, I, I, I do like some of the efficiencies going forward, um, you know, even staffing wise, like this, this program can work. Um, our busiest time here, and it's a nightmare, is springtime. Um, the wants and the needs, all the programs, all of the turf and the funerals, everything takes off like a rocket in the spring. Um, where the, where you could take some of the staff from, from highway and generate them over to the park and cemetery uh, side and accomplish some of those things and have the manpower that you need during the, those, this springtime. And vice versa, in the winter months, you, you can take when it's a slower time for park and cemetery and move them over to highway to help out during the uh, uh, snow removal and cleanups. Um, this is, this program can work, I mean, there's a lot of efficiencies that can happen here. Um, equipment wise, um, everything. Um, you know, there's, there's stuff up at the, the highway that a mini roller, which is ideal for the baseball diamonds, right now we contract all of our rolling services out uh, to compact the infield. We, we've got a mini roller, um, there's a, 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 a gas powered jackhammer. We don't have that accessibility, um, so there's a lot of different things that, that small things that, that definitely the efficiencies are going to be there and, and the manpower, the changing back and forth and the talents of some of the people on each department, it can be utilized.
Great, thank you, Steve. Um, the, one of the other items too, we talked about group purchases, right? Economies of scale, if we're looking at three departments purchasing, um, you know, whether it be office supplies or, or uh, you know, multiple pieces of equipment, whatever that might be, there's some opportunity there as well. Um, talked about some elimination of redundancy in the capital planning as well. Um, again, with some of the shared resources, et cetera, um, there's opportunity there. And then, um, I think this is really important, employee cross-training, um, you know, I've seen it work really well where you have people of multiple skills, um, who can, who can, you know, if needed to be called upon, they can move over on a, on a, in an emergency or, or a real priority project. Maybe put off doing something they might be doing anyway and lend a hand with another group to get something done in a timely fashion. Um, and so I think there's a real value there as well. And so, you know, having everyone falling under one, one, one formant um, can get us those types of opportunities to share those resources within the team. Um, the, any other thoughts from our guys, Greg, Gary, Steve, on the operational efficiencies?
It, it, I, I, I think just one thing, that every employee in this town has a talent. And um, uh, to be able to use that and cross um, over highway, water, park, cemetery, wherever it be, um, those talents can be utilized. You've got some great equipment operators in all levels here and you've got, everybody's licensed and um, uh, I mean, we've got, we've got a guy on our crew that, that's got a tremendous tree background. Um, arborist background, that can be utilized anywhere in any of the departments. You've got some fantastic heavy equipment operators over at the highway. Um, so I, I, I think this is, in my personal opinion, I think this is definitely a win-win.
So the obvious question then is, uh, can we eliminate a whole or a half a person between the two departments or more?
Well, I, I, I don't think that, that's the goal, I, I think, you know, we're, you've got to take a look at your, your seasonal staff and I think by um, maybe eventually Dick, kind of eliminating the seasonal staff and there's a lot of various reasons for it, I won't go into that, we'll be here all day. Um, and you pick up a full-time person in the backside and bring them forward. Now you've got a person with, with, that can go anywhere within this um, operation and um, can satisfy the needs wherever they're needed, so I, I, there's definitely, um.
Needs there, right, Steve? I mean, there's, there's, it seems like from the operational standpoint, like right now, we didn't hire any seasonal staff on the, on the parks and cemetery side, um, and Steve's straight out, I mean, he's jumping in there with the guys doing the work, um, to get it done. So, I mean, there's certainly enough need and, you know, I've, I've heard, you know, there's always people in the community, um, the TAA and others who, you know, they pride themselves in wanting to have, you know, maintain, adequately maintained fields and, and we're doing a great job on them. We wouldn't want to lose any ground on that, um, if anything, we hope to, you know, if there's ways to, you do better, great. If, if, but we certainly want to lose ground on something like that, so. Um, it's a, it's a fair question, um, anytime you, 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 you sort of look in the merge people into a different department, you know, with the cross-training and people having different skills, um, is there enough capacity where people might be able to pick up something somebody else is doing? Um, we certainly will look at that, but just based on sort of my observations at least for the last um, few months, um, I know the teams, everybody, especially Gary too, is understaffed as well right now because of the hiring freeze, um, the guys are working every bit of, every bit of their capacity and then some to try to uh, keep things at a level, uh, a level that we're at right now, so.
The other thing, Dick, Dick, uh, this is Phil. Uh, uh, Dick, the other thing is, the intent is not here to cut down personnel. Intent is to improve the efficiency of the administration because presently you have a situation where basically because uh, of the way the thing is structured, the board of selectmen, yes, they handle the contracts, but that's all they can do with the highway department. The highway department is managed by the board of road commissioners, which is elected by the people. The same is true of the water department and the same is true of the park and cemetery department. Uh, so you have a town administrator who, you've, you've finally got a good town administrator in place and he should have the oversight of, of, of managing these different departments and also uh, being involved in their budgets. Uh, so you're trying to improve the efficiency of how the town is managed. Right now you've got three boards that, that makes it somewhat cumbersome. And also, I mean, yes, the departments have worked together, but it doesn't necessarily mean that they had to, uh, because they report to the board that is elected by the people. So, uh, we're trying to eliminate that and as you know, we visited this before and it would have been in place a long time ago if we'd handled the paperwork correctly.
So last thing I want to cover, um, in, in some detail is the recreational opportunities. Though obviously we talked about the, the, the two options based on circumstances, based on economy, based on a lot of different elements, there's two paths we could take with the rec. This next slide contemplates a recreation director and what they might be able to help us do here in town. And so this is sort of just some ideas that I put down the slide, it's not everything. It doesn't encompass everything that they'll do, but it gives you at least some sense of some of the opportunities that will, will happen. some of the opportunities that will, will happen. I mean, Gretchen and Marshall, feel free to jump in yourselves, too, if you have any thoughts on, on the recreational side. Um, but the, you know, the, the number one thing that they're going to be working on is, um, building up public programming opportunities in Topsfield. Um, you know, Steve mentioned earlier a couple of opportunities, like the Walk in the Green and, um, our Holiday in the Green and some other items, um, where this person would be helpful, um, dedicating part of their time towards, but also generating some camp opportunities and, 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 in partnering with people who might do Zumba classes and, and, you know, giving permits out to, to use it. And, um, you know, a percentage of what the cost might be comes back to the town, or we pay that person a fee to do the class for us, and the cost, the cost that, of doing that comes back. Um, if we don't offer it for a reduced cost or for free or what ha, what have you, but that's some of the opportunities and some revenue generation. But generally, having classes and having camps are, are things this person can work on. I also see that, you know, there's a real opportunity to, to, um, to have this person focusing in on permitting and managing of the, of use of the fields and the open space. We can implement electronic booking for those uses, and they'll be liaisons to the TAA, um, as well. Um, which, as I understand it, you know, that in and of itself takes a lot of time, um, and we want to make sure we get that right. Um, and then support the maintenance needs, too, uh, playgrounds, tennis courts, basketball courts and more. So, you know, I, I envision this person, similar to what Steve's already doing, going around, um, just taking inventory, um, possibly even getting certified to, to, as a, um, there's certification when it comes to, um, being able to identify broken elements of, of playgrounds, for instance, uh, that the person might be able to go for, and, and, that gives you a level of abilities when it comes to, um, re, repairs and such. Um, and then I, you know, we talked about the camps and the classes, but the revenue generation, use of the fields and all those things can come back, um, to the town, um, and help with our operations, uh, because this, there's all this work that Steve does and the work that this person will be doing and growing. Um, it takes time, it takes money, um, so we'll be able to recoup some of that, which would be great. And I put this in there, too. I've seen, um, you know, grant writing take place out of the recreation departments in my past, um, and we would certainly look, and I would take, tell this person that a big part of their job is, especially in the off-season, identify grants that can come in to help us with, um, helping with our facilities, helping with improvements, uh, et cetera. So, um, we'd look to tap that opportunity as well, but, um, you know, there's, there's a whole wealth of things that, um, a dedicated recreational, uh, director could, could help us with here in town and ultimately offer more opportunities. Yep. Um, the last thing I'll just say, go ahead, Phil.
Just before you go. One of the things that I think we don't always take advantage of enough, um, is back, again, when I moved to town, the early 2000s, um, the powers, uh, that be, um, ran a very extensive program, um, and it was basically a summer-oriented program. I would like to see a recreation director, uh, role, somebody who's looking for things year-round, so that, for instance, we have an auditorium, there could be some things then. I think that both the continuity through the year is tremendous in terms of planning and so on and so forth, but I would, uh, like to see the potential for a broader role for that, um, individual in that function, so that recreation becomes more than just the ball fields. Critical piece, we do that. Who is upon, critical piece. Not giving up anything, but I think there are some areas in which we could add to the quality of life in town by using an individual who's already focused in on who the people are, what the resources are, who are the folks they need to work with, and how can we go about making this happen? So, I just think this is a spectacular opportunity. We're not committing to anybody yet, but we're saying, could be.
Yeah, and I would echo that, uh, in my year-plus on park, singular park and cemetery, um, camps, other uses of our green space like the common, and grant writing are the things that I keep hearing from people, that we don't do enough of. And I see all three of those on here at some point.
Good point, good points.
I, I, just coming from my own personal experience, my dad, they lived in Stratford, and he became the first recreation director the town ever had. Uh, when he went in, they put him at a desk upstairs in the highway garage and said, "Go to it." Uh, when he left, and when he retired, uh, they had a senior center. He was in charge of all the beaches in that area. He had after-school programs in the schools, uh, very expanded recreation. And I could see the potential for this expanding much as our senior program is expanding. Uh, and it would definitely improve the quality of life, uh, for those who are citizens of the town, to have these kinds of opportunities that are organized, um, and, you know, somebody totally focused. I mean, I'm sure Steve many times has said, "What the hell did you do to me, giving me all this recreation? This isn't what I was here for." Uh, and so, you know, if you have a person that that's their focus, you'd be amazed at what's going to come of that. Uh, so I, I really think it's, it, and that's why, in all of the meetings, you've heard me advocate strongly to get the recreation out of the park and cemetery and get it into its own, its own space.
We took a call today just on summer camps, so people, there is an interest out there to get, you know, for all age groups and, uh, non-competitive sports and, uh, classes and so on.
Uh, I, I wanted to make another point, which is totally unrelated, maybe this isn't the place, and you can start me, Kevin, if it isn't. Um, once you dissolve the boards, uh, and I guess I'm speaking mainly to the Board of Selectmen, uh, state law requires that there be a Board of Cemetery Commissioners. And it, it does allow for the selectmen to be that Board of Cemetery Commissioners. So, uh, that's something that will need to be addressed as to how you can do it. I think they also, I think the selectmen also can appoint a Board of Cemetery Commissioners, but I'm not sure of that. I'm sure Kevin can address all that. But that is something, and I've spoken separately to Kevin about, I don't know whether that has to be approved at town meeting, I guess KMP could give that answer. Um, but, uh, the Board of Cemetery Commissioners can't go away.
Yeah, so we, it cannot, you're correct, Mr. Knowles. It's, um, what, when I talked with it, and I, I've asked about three or four times to Lauren, because I wanted to make sure the language in the warrant was correct, do not want to have an issue that we had to go back. Um, do we have to put any explicit language in there? And she said, no, that, that it will revert to the Board of Selectmen, those responsibilities. Um, so the language in the, in the whole petition is, is, is good, it should be good, and that is the intent. And it's not spelled out explicitly, so it's a good question to ask, it's a good point to make, but that, that would, just to confirm, yes, that, that's certainly the intent. Um, last things I'm going to mention, um, in the presentation, just to kind of recap, you know, based on the analysis that we've done, work put forward by the team, you know, we recognize, we believe we'll be able to save money on, on salaries, whether it's basically a cost neutral, if we hire a rec director, or if it's a savings temporarily, we go with our time person in that sense. Um, and we'll be able to, um, you know, provide hopefully more services through the rec department. Uh, we'll create more efficiencies in operations, and we'll also, through the rec department, be able to create potentially an enterprise fund, which will bring revenue in as well, so that initial cost savings or net zero, call it for conservatively on, on the salaries we bring in, that could, by having that person, more revenues will come in, so it offsets and becomes a, a benefit to the town in that sense as well. So, financially, it seems like it's going to be a win-win, um, in that regard. Um, I'll give an oppo, oh, sorry, Lynn, go ahead.
I was just going to say, with the town meeting now only about two weeks away, um, someone I'm sure is going to be speaking to this, because it's a big change for the town. Um, who is actually addressing this and giving a summary of why this makes sense and why we're doing this or proposing it?
So, my intent, after talking with you folks and making sure that everything I've said makes sense and you're comfortable with it, um, I would then go to the liaison to the FinCom, and I would, I would plan to walk that, um, I think it's, is it Eric? No, it's, um, well, anyway, the liaison, um, thank you, thank you, it's Lou, you're right. Um, and basically walk him through all of the, the, what I just shared with you folks, what the intents are, so that he's well-prepared, because my understanding, not having been at a town meeting in Topsfield before, that he will be presenting the Warren article, um, to, to the community, and I want to make sure he's prepared and has the information that we have. Um, in addition to that, obviously, there's the public comment section, as I understand, too, where people can comment on the, um, the article. And based on the type of question what comes up, I mean, we should certainly strategize on who's addressing what, but, um, I, I probably defer maybe, Lynn, sorry, just in the sense that not having seen a Topsfield town meeting, what, who would be appropriate to speak, um, beyond Lou?
I suppose that's usually the approach, the FinCom gets an explanation, and then the area experts are there. So, if we have our superintendents and the, the, the board members there to address the questions, I think that will go a really long distance in letting them know that everybody is behind this and that it makes sense to the people who are currently running those boards and operations.
I, I would say to you, Lynn, that, uh, it would be my intent at town meeting to stand up and fortunately or unfortunately, I can speak on behalf of two-thirds of the boards. I know that the highway department, uh, the highway board is totally behind this and, and in favor of it. We're, we're going to miss the pay, but, you know. Um, the water board, uh, and I've talked with them, um, briefly, uh, they have a few minor concerns, and I hopefully, in my conversation with them, I address them. Uh, you know, we do definitely want to see that the enterprise system stays in place, that the water revenue is used to continue with the water, expanding and improving the water system. You know, we built a water treatment plant, we still have a lot of miles of pipe that has to be replaced and so forth, and, uh, we don't want somebody looking at the, the funds that, that are, are in the water department, because there's, there's quite a bit of money, uh, there and say, "Oh, we could use that over here." Um, you, you've got to maintain the integrity of that.
Right.
But, uh, the water system, the water board, once again, they too will miss the pay, uh, but they're in support of this, this change. And I think it, you know, from a personal standpoint, and I've been on the road commissioners almost 30 years, so I have some expertise. Um, it's time, it's time that, that, you know, we, we do this, this, uh, uh, streamlining.
Phil, were there any other concerns, um, from the water department besides the enterprise fund staying in place?
We nailed Greg Crom's feet to the ground, so he can't leave town. No, I, we're very fortunate, and I've said it publicly in many, many forums, that, that Greg is with us, uh, because, uh, we have a tremendous asset, uh, overseeing the, the quality and the safety of our water.
And I think park, singular, and cemetery, um, are, are good to go with this, too. Everybody's comfortable.
Yeah, I was just going to commend, uh, because when we did this call last, and I don't remember what that was, February or March, at that point, the approach when it came to the recreational component was literally, "We'll figure that out later," um, which was, to me, very worrisome. Uh, we have now clearly thoroughly figured it out, and so with that component in place, I have, uh, no problem supporting this plan.
And Gretchen, you're good, too. I think you had voiced your support.
I think, um, Steve has been involved in the process, and, um, I feel like this is a really thorough plan. Um, kudos to you, Kevin, for bringing together a lot of different opinions on this, and, and I, I, I have completely come around, I'm fully in support of it. I think it makes sense, and I think the potential for growth and streamlining is excellent, so fully supportive.
That's great.
I just want to say thank you, Gretchen, and thank you, uh, Marshall, for A, engaging in this, B, contributing, and, um, I think the importance of saying that not just the paid administration, but the elected boards have been involved in this and see the value to the town is a very powerful statement. So, thank you for your investment in coming along this far, and thank you.
Listen, whenever I can partake in losing a job, I'm, I'm...
You did it gracefully, Marshall.
Well, you're going the other way in two weeks, Marshall.
You never say it on before-election.
You realize, you realize, Marshall, for a period of time, you hold two positions.
I, I will, and in fact, we are busily about to elect another park and cemetery commissioner, so.
Yep.
The feel for poor Jay, who's going to get the job and have it go away pretty quickly.
Um, I'd just like to acknowledge, though, one last final time, I said at the top, I'll say it again, um, this whole plan that's been presented is a result of the hard work of the three department heads, uh, on the call today. Um, Gary has been tinkering with this and putting a lot of thought into it. Greg's been doing a fantastic job helping with understanding all the nuances of the water. And Steve's just been absolutely tremendous in giving us, um, all the history around the, the rec and the parks and the, and the cemetery. What you see today is a result of their work, and I just want to acknowledge that they've done fantastic work. And if you guys have anything you'd like to say, I don't want to be remiss in giving you an opportunity to sort of summarize anything that, that's on your mind with this, because collectively, we'll be the ones living with it.
Um, as far, as far as my stance, it, it, it's no secret that, that probably originally I wasn't for this. Um, but let me tell you, with guidance of Kevin and the direction that he can do and his abilities, um, this can work, it really can. And I'm looking at all the efficiencies and all the combinations and the transfer of staff where it's going to be needed and equipment, and, um, I, I, I don't see, I, I, I see service actually going up to the public, I really do. I, I see the, uh, ma, as far as the park and cemetery is concerned, the maintenance of the, of, of our sports complexes, you know, your diamonds and so on, actually being enhanced. Um, I, I, I think going forward, like I said, if, if, if it wasn't anybody else, Kevin is the one that can make this happen. And I think with his guidance, that, that, um, in support and, and his drive, it happened in a very positive fashion.
Thanks, Steve.
I would echo that. Great job to all, everybody. This is just, uh, fantastic how much has been accomplished in a relatively short period of time, but I think the timing is perfect. This, this really all came together at the right time.
Yeah, and I'd like to just, on behalf of my individual woes as selectmen, sometimes these questions kind, come up and get dumped on the selectmen to kind of resolve them, you know, with the elected board and so on. You make a decision, and the pieces aren't really together, and it's our job to sort of see, well, we could put them together this way and that. Um, one of the significant differences here, which I see as a way going forward, and frankly, Kevin, I think it's a little bit your style, too, um, when you get everything coordinated, ask the tough questions, wrestle with the issues that are difficult, and do all that with the people who are going to have to own the results, can contribute to making something work, and are going to face the challenges, working that stuff out in advance. Um, first of all, you have a smaller crew for that, and second of all, it brings me, and I suspect the rest of the selectmen, into a position where we feel that, done the heavy lifting, you've shown that there is a path to make this work, and I think that's a critical piece to, uh, just sort of how we need to run the town. So, I'm absolutely tickled pink with this, and Steve, knowing that you were not a, a, a sure bet for a long time there, um, your words mean a great deal to me, and reflecting on, uh, your working with Kevin. And, um, Gary, I know you, and Greg, I know you, have also really had to kind of get down and wrestle with, uh, with Kevin on a lot of these issues, and, um, delighted you guys have been able to do it and come up with a good resolution.
Our pleasure.
Yeah.
Thank you, it's been a pleasure.
Yeah, excellent.
Since I've been yapping so much the whole time, then I, I'll try to wrap it up and make it quick. I got all my questions answered that I had today, and, uh, if I waited long enough, and I'm really, really very upbeat about this, it's something we've thought about for quite some time, and, uh, I think we're on the right track. I do think that there are going to be problems that have come up that we haven't thought of, it's inevitable. And I would propose that this group continue to meet for a quarterly base, on a quarterly basis for maybe the next three quarters and, uh, and, and try to see how it's going and, uh, and, and maybe, you know, to fine-tune things a little bit, and, uh, but not, obviously not make a career out of it, but, uh, something to just follow up.
That's a great idea.
Seems reasonable.
Well, and I, I also think this is going to have, uh, ripple effects, um, and for no reason would it, would it change, I think, moving forward, but, you know, these boards have, over the years, have, uh, produced a number of selectmen that started off... boards have, over the years have produced a number of Selectmen that started off of these boards. And I don't think there are many Selectmen that get elected right off the bat without participating in town in some other capacity before running for a Selectmen's position. So with the elimination of the boards, there are nine entry-level positions in town leadership that are going to go away. And also, future boards, the Selectmen aren't going to have necessarily the nuts and bolts knowledge about how these departments work. That's, I think, a ripple effect of what's going forward, but I think it's, it's important to keep stuff like that in mind.
It's a good point Greg. I, I, speaking for myself, I was not on any of the three boards, but there are a number of opportunities in town, a, a number of boards and committees that are out there, from the library to Hood Pond to Council on Aging, that I think are still available for folks, but you're right, it is a, a reduced area of opportunity to learn about the town.
But I think it's, it's minor compared to benefits that could be realized, but it's, it's something to keep in mind.
Kevin, given that we have gone through the presentation you put together, had a pretty robust conversation, sort of looking in terms of the overall meeting and so on, have we met your goals in discussion of this item? And should we, with a note to continuing this design at some point, to be determined on date, probably after the election, I was going to be asked at the town meeting and so on, is there anything further or should I ask for a motion to adjourn?
I'm, I'm, this was great for me. At some point, you know, as we continue to move forward with, with the fine details of this, to Joe, your point to, you know, we want to try to get ahead of all those, there will be places where we say, oh, you know what, that's something, you know, we didn't consider, but the, like I said at the top, the institutional knowledge here is incredibly important to, to me and to, to the department head. So to the, to the quarterly advisory and maybe an ad hoc component within that as well as we continue to craft this, would be really helpful and I just, I, I appreciate because it sounds like there's a real willingness from everybody to continue that, that as-needed sort of a support and that means a lot to me. So thank you for that as we move forward. So to that, I, I have nothing else this time other than the note, note that I, I'm going to continue to be listening and talking with you folks.
Great. If there's nothing further, I would like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Yes, motion to adjourn.
Yes, and Dick? Dick's on mute, so.
Dick, do you want a second?
I will get a second.
He's smiling.
Yes, I second it.
There is a first and a second. I hereby will take a roll call vote. Lynn?
Hi.
Dick?
Hi.
John?
Aye.
The three members present have voted unanimously to adjourn the meeting. Gentlemen and gentle ladies, thank you very much for your time on this. Kevin, thank you for putting this together, very valuable set of interactions. And I can venture so far to say that I don't think you'd get all of us to be able to sit down if it wasn't for Zoom and so on, so. I just think it's taking tremendous advantage of what has been seen as a disadvantage and town business goes forward and continues to work. So thank you all very much.
Great. Thanks everyone.
Thank you everybody.
Have a good day.
Bye-bye.